...here the faster it goes. Yeah, I'm not going to repeat anything on Monday. I think there are only four people we knew were not coming so we can sit here and wait for the others that didn't tell us they're not coming and aren't coming and then just, you know.
I think we should start.
Your way around and pedal right.
Right, right. So let me jump over to our resolutions introduced. And that would be Resolution 5881-19 which relates to a salary adjustment in the Department of Audit. And so it's kind of a simple adjustment, but I would want to...
...to work down very. I also quite control as a analyst Joel Stetson. He, his position was created when we did the audit regarding the utilities, paid $108,000. So the administration decided to give it to our office. So we hired him. He was originally in Tep and then he came on full time. So we are proposing a five-year increase because he's now saved $129,000. We're continuing to do the process of reviewing these utility bills and he's also taken on additional duties. So we are proposing, you know, $1,500 increase, but it will be from July through December. So it's really set at $1,500.
Any questions?
Well, I'm just going to ask a question about the utility person. So what was the issue with that utility person?
The first time, first time or what he caught.
What he caught.
What he caught was he first met with all the departments and there were quite a few phones that were not usage. So we shut down the phones that nobody was using. And then he, the biggest one was $33,000. Constellation, which was the big problem before too, not National Grid, which is the ESO, that incorrect billing in the map. So they, a lot of it had to do with kilowatt hours. That was a one-time adjustment. And then direct energy was a utility volume adjustment and that was $43,000. So he not only looks at the kilowatt hours for pricing as well as trying to see, that's the utility side of it, and on the phone side of it, he meets with the departments to try to make sure we have any equipment that we're not using, that we're not paying for. And so he's constantly, he has a huge spreadsheet to constantly update this because it does take a lot of active analysis and he's really good at what he does. So now he's been able to, you know, pick up some time, so he's picked up some other duties, like buyouts and payroll things.
Do we do any purchasing of electricity direct from a within that?
We, so we do with Constellation. That's a deal through the Budget Department. So it's a short-term deal. We don't, we engaged into that five-year contract and it got us in a little trouble because it's a half million dollars more than it, we stayed with National Grid.
I'm wondering if he's an in-house expert with the House, wanting to say who's our division is our.
Well, a lot of that...
Whatever that proposal we have to go in.
For which ones are?
That's an issue.
Well, you're talking with the community choice.
Yes.
Okay.
So the community choice, so Ransome's here with me too and he's the deputy. And Ransome, I don't know if you know Ransome or, so he's the one that got instrumental with this in the first round with National Grid and Constellation. And that's when we hired Joel. And then Ransome worked with Joel as far as some of these and with Kevin Luter. And because this is a believable opportunity, but that's where, when we talked about the, you know, working with the ESO is the problems that there are. And we're, what we addressed those with previously. Yes. But at any time, you know, you guys I know will continue to research it.
But this is an ESO that you were contracting with. It's not like...
It's a short-term, but it's not like the last time we locked, we locked in. This is, so Mike Wheeler is the one that makes the decision on what, whether we switch to National Grid or we stay with Constellation. And then we just followed his lead. But Mike Wheeler and Ransome actually meet and talk, you know, because it's, it is a, yeah, it's utility. But it's, but Constellation, that was a sad part of this, is now Constellation is twice now as billed and the number's pretty big. That's all.
It's what?
Constellation is twice now. They're the ones that, first time they charged us the GRT tax and that's where that was a big number, $1,508,000 that Ransome caught for his first month that he was here. I can't remember the Constellation's amount that was part of the GRT tax. And then this year is $33,000, which is incorrect billing map.
So that's not correct?
No, so he fixed it. So I'm saying we constantly review the bills and it upsetting to me that Constellation now has two large dollar amounts that have been adjusted and that's an ESO. It's, you gotta stay on top of them. That's my, you know, biggest concern. Any other questions?
If not, oh, but...
I look at your, 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 for the goal these guys, you still staying on the budget question?
Yes, so we're, because we didn't, when one person left our office, we didn't give the person that was hired her complete salary. So we're stood, we're on your budget $9,470 still. So with these adjustments. So, and that includes buyout for Eric Ma because he was our auditor that left and was recently hired new auditor. Any other questions?
Not, great, thank you. So this will be a pass for Monday. Is Judy's okay?
Judy will carry.
Yeah, well, I assume she will.
Yeah.
So moving forward for Monday, remember we have a public hearing. The notice is on the inside page of your agenda. And so the public hearing will happen right after Moment of Silence, seven-four public comment. That's on Judy's ordinance related to a moratorium or the incentive for green and blue earths, which came out of Committee, Planning Committee with a positive recommendation, also reflects the recommendations from the Planning Board. So my expectation is that there will be no problems at the hearing and that we'll probably move to pass that on Monday. Local law is held, local law G, no action. On the introduction of ordinances, 1581-19 by Mr. Hoey is also an amendment to the USDO with regard to some provisions. I'm going to let Jared summarize that.
So what this does is essentially it affects building permits and demolition permits and it requires that no permit be issued without any prior conditions that may be set by a state, federal, or city ABC or department. So if a department of one of those levels of government comes in and looks at this project and says, "In order for this project to move forward, we need to make sure that, for instance, the telephone wires are buried in front of the lot before," and then official letter is handed to the Planning Department and the Planning Board, that they can't override that and go ahead and issue the demolition permit before such an action is taken. And then the second piece is when they're reviewing the application for a major development plan, there's a piece in there that allows the Planning Board to waive anything that they say is practicable, oh, what's the language? But essentially it allows the Planning Board to give a variance to the USDO when they find that something is just like unworkable and Tom feels that that's not their role to provide variances to developers. And so he's trying to remove that waiver piece out.
So like we discovered that issue of burying the electrical lines of electric in this project?
Yeah, it's something like that, exactly. So there was an issue where the fire chief wrote a letter saying, "In order to move forward, we need you to bury the lines here. This is a fire hazard, safety issue." And then the Planning Department said, "Actually, you can go ahead and build, but we won't give you a certificate of occupancy until they're buried." So there was that conflict and technically the developer would follow the Planning Board and not listen to the fire chief. And so we want to make sure that, or Tom wants to make sure that it's blatantly clear in there that if such a condition is placed by anybody prior, you can't give a permit out until those conditions are met.
And yet regarding common wall issue like the outside outlet industry, what's that out for?
I don't know about that would be...
No, that was, that was an emergency demolition. It wouldn't be covered here. It's not a Planning Board, Planning Department issue. So obviously the Planning Committee, it does have to go to the Planning Board also and they have to make a recommendation. And of course, the Planning Department does have some concerns about it, so...
And I think Tom was also, he had kind of had a discussion with Judy about this and the two of them felt that it would get them in here to describe why it is they feel they need this power to provide variance in these situations. And has it been used and how it's being used and whatnot, so...
All right, so that's an introduction and a referral for planning. On the ordinance is held, again, the only item would be item number five, which is the Judy's ordinance that will be subject to the public hearing. On resolutions, 5781-19R relates to, I guess, certifying the adjusted base proportions that the school district adopts for property tax purposes. It had, and this is, I don't know how many members were here when we discussed this in the past. And I don't remember if we did this last year.
We did, I think.
Did we? Or was it the year before we didn't do it?
I don't, I don't know if we did.
I don't think we did.
I think there's a big, I don't think, there's a big discussion.
Yeah.
Maybe we made that decision that we should be doing.
There was the question as to whether or not we needed...
We didn't do it.
We didn't do it because there was a whole issue. We're not, we're not approving the base proportions that the school district is adopting. We're only, in a sense, certifying that they have the authority to set those proportions based on the local law that we adopted, where we set base proportions for our own property tax purposes.
Is that what this does?
It's, this is the question as to why are we doing something that has no impact when we pass the local law that authorizes it? Or are we just supposed to certify that they are eligible to do it?
And we couldn't get someone from the school last time.
Yeah.
They wouldn't show up.
So it went to, I believe it went to Finance Committee and we never really did anything on it. So...
It was like a bizarre, right, area where we were somehow supposed to do it, but it doesn't really make sense.
Right.
Because we're saying, okay, well, we have to stay. So I think that that's a weird...
So we're going, well, the introduction, the last one went to Finance. I, we don't have a lot of people here tonight. I don't know what we're doing. So it's an introduction right now, Mike go to Finance and we'll have further discussion. What?
Go whether it's cities, go where?
I'm not quite sure. There are very few cities that do have the base proportions that we...
Yes, so there's not really other cities that are in the same situation as all of them. I forget.
Well, it's also if it's a, it's, the school district is wholly within the municipal unit. You have some areas where school districts are overlap municipal boundaries, so that might be...
I think that was it.
Something as well.
In most places where this comes up, it's, there's, the school district is in some different...
And I think we're the only local city that has adopted the homestead. Anyway, I...
But it wasn't a problem last year. The school district collected the taxes.
Yeah, it really...
It doesn't have anything to do with, it's like Heather, I think Richard has mentioned somewhere, it's like they, according to some bizarre law, they feel like they have to do it.
Yeah, I will get, pull up the law. It's actually, it's in, well, you, you should be here. I don't know if the, oh, yeah, well, actually, the, the section of law is right here in the title. So you can pull that up.
Okay.
And look at that.
And we send it to everyone?
Yeah, why don't you pull it up and we'll look at it and everything else. The, I guess the base proportions that they did adopt are the same as last year, so there's no change. So we'll make this an introduction for now.
Okay.
And then the other one will be 5881-19 that Sue just talked about as a pass. The other resolutions on the agenda are holes, except for item number seven, actually. Seven should be Kathy. Not me.
Oh, you...
Yeah.
Oh, I thought that was you.
No. So this is Adriana.
Adriana appointment.
So this is a resolution confirming Adriana LeBlanc's appoint, LeBlanc's appointment to the zoning board, which came out of the Planning Committee. Was it last week or was it?
Just on Monday.
Oh, it was on Monday, okay.
Yeah.
Seems like ages ago. So that will be a pass for Monday. And then we have 1MC. Okay, so this is for the PEG Board. A couple of issues here. We have four appointments. Currently only one is really being used, that's Don Hyman.
Yeah, who actually attends the meeting.
Right. So the resolution passing around will re, is a reappointment of Don, Don Hyman, who's term expired on July 1. So we want a reappointment. Reappoint him. He's a good member. He will be here Monday at caucus to, as you can ask me questions. We need to, and you know, we need to get the, the PEG Board, the PEG stuff has come along a long way since we had some issues last year or the year before. So, but we have, I, we need to make some appointments. Sometimes they're running into quorum issues.
Yes.
And I think they're okay for their meeting coming up.
Yep.
So we're going to be putting out, I'm going to be putting out another call for applications for the three other positions we have. And that will, will get out. And then we're going to reestablish the ad hoc committee.
Oh.
That was, we previously had because that committee did a lot of work and is familiar with what's going on, et cetera. That was Dorsey, Mike, and Alfredo. Dorsey is, is not going to continue just because I think she pulled out because she has a lot of other commitments right now and so she's not, and she does, she's, she does support and think we need to reappoint Don. So, so if you two guys will continue, we'll make a third member, but you know, we have time on that because the more immediate thing, we still need to get the call for app...
She's like, no. I have a project with them and I'm like...
I wasn't appointing anybody because we need to get the, the applicants in. So that will go out and there's, be some time between then and now. If anyone is interested, let me know. But I think if, if Mike and Alfredo will continue because you have all the background and what's been going on, that will be helpful. And the sole purpose of the ad hoc committee will be to interview the applicants and make a recommendation back to the full council.
Yeah. The actual PEG Board is functioning, it has good leadership.
Yes.
And they actually have a lot of progress. The terms, they have a studio, they're open, staff with, first to be there, even more time than he pays for. And they did a contract with Open State Media to actually do all the technical work. So they actually have programming and they have nice, workable meetings. Except they sometimes don't have...
Yeah, yeah. So we'll, we'll hopefully take care of that. And, and Don continues on even though he has not been reappointed, he can continue to serve. But we want, if we can reappoint him on Monday, that will take care of that.
Mike's the chair of the committee, right?
I don't know yet.
Who's the chair?
Dorsey, but Dorsey's not going to continue.
No, I think...
Oh, Mary, Mary Rosack.
Mayor Rosack, the county, from the county.
Yeah, she's good because she's really, she has taken it to the next level. And I will credit Dorsey and the ad hoc committee for cleaning up a lot of other issues that we had dealing with.
We have a lot of adults.
And bringing it, you know, getting adults back in the room and all that kind of stuff and changing things. So things are good. Any other que, I have some other couple of issues I'll touch on, but any other questions on the agenda?
I have a non, I carry the question.
Well, that's probably the one that I have.
That one, yeah.
Yeah, so just quickly on the, some notes from the leadership meeting, couple of issues we talked about. One, one is the waste collection fee and the process moving forward. My sense is, although I don't know, that Mayor of his plan is probably...
Put it in the budget.
Well, yeah, it's going to be in the budget because the fee is in the budget or has to be, it produces revenue for the budget. Well, I think we had, the intent was for, to try to move towards a kind of a volume-based fee system. That doesn't seem to be on the radar screen, so I think what they're going to propose is just continuation of the current fee. And how that happens, I'm not sure yet. It's not, it's, we really have to, the current authorization expires at the end of this year. That was done by local law, et cetera. One of the other issues we were talking about were the, the cost for collection. She did indicate that she was going to, and I got confirmation from Dave today, that they're, Joe Gablehouse is going to update the figures in terms of what the current costs for waste collection are. And they will be getting that to us. It's not going to, you know, it'll take a couple of days, but that's in, in the works. So we will be getting that so that we can have some sense as to what the current costs are.
And the forum for, you know, digesting all this is going to be the full caucus.
What do you mean for digesting?
Well, rather than having a general services committee meeting, it'll be...
Yeah, yeah, I don't know what, if, if they're just going to give us, you know, paper.
I assume they will give us paper.
Yeah, that's what we'll get.
And some spreadsheets. And then, and then one of, one of my biggest question is, the cost of disposing of recyclables keeps going up and up.
Right.
So it, there may very well be a fee increase if we could try to make it...
Well, I don't know, to, to date, I don't believe that the cost of recycling has been factored into the fee calculation.
I don't think it has.
It has not.
No, it hasn't.
Even though we're now paying, so...
To recycle.
All right.
So, I mean, I think that's a discussion which we should have.
Yeah, so let's see, so we are expecting that. We'll see what we get.
Yep.
And I, I don't frankly, you know, I sort of make the, the point that I think we need to have some of this discussion before the budget comes out.
Absolutely.
That's not something that there seems to be an interest in.
It'll get on, remember.
You said it'll come back. No, well, I don't know if it will or not. But remember, the budget's coming up pretty soon also, by October 1. So I think, you know, the mayor says, "Well, it'll be in the budget." You know, you can decide what you want to do with it.
No effort made whatsoever to actually do before it gets with the issue?
No, I think because we raised the issue of trying to have, and I made the point because this is kind of a separate vote and I think there's a need to have that discussion on what the policy is prior to the budget so that, you know, maybe we can have some input in it, et cetera. But there didn't seem to be, Jared was there, so there doesn't seem to be any interest in it.
Yeah, I think that they, they talked about that they've done some research on the other option and that that, having equity issues and so on. I think that there is more to the conversation, as Richard said, they just aren't seeing that as something worth chasing in terms of a conversation now because the equity issue is so large.
So I think for now, they want to just continue with straight fee. And maybe at some point down the road, move to something volume-based where it's, you know, somewhat associated with the amount of trash you generate. But that's not something that seems to be on the radar screen. Of course, that, that also encourages, encourages people to reduce the amount of waste and reduce costs, but, you know, so I don't know what the incentives are for reducing waste or recycling right now. And that's another whole issue in terms of the markets, et cetera. And, you know, what we need to do to create, you might say, clean recyclables, which is what I think the overseas markets want, or the planes, rather than soiled recyclables, which might also mean more.
More stuff that shouldn't be in.
Yeah, stuff that shouldn't be in. You know, single stream is convenient, but it also reduces and does create some contamination of recyclables. And so that, that's a problem.
Yep, so we just can't hand them all over because there's contamination.
Right. But if you do like the paper, metal, separate plastics, then that's going to be, people are less likely to do that, so...
It's so frustrating.
It is.
It is.
That we, you know, the huge job we made for single stream recycling.
And I work hard not to contaminate my recycling.
Yeah, I do.
And there was never that discussion about the contamination.
Well, it wasn't an issue. It's just within the past year or so that they...
Well, it was getting people just...
I know, but we just relied on China to take it anyway.
And not taking it.
What they were doing.
Well, I think, I think as a city, I think we wanted people to recycle, so we said, "If we just go single stream, it will encourage them to do that first."
Well, that was the intent.
And now we, I think now we could start moving to the next level where we say, "Okay, now..."
The idea was if you did single stream, even though there was some level of contamination and reduced the amount that was actually recyclable, if you increased the volume of recycling, that would offset the loss. And that was the intent, of making it easier.
Yep.
Okay, so that's where that is. And I also want to touch on the, the Planning Department's PowerPoint presentation on, when, when Chris was here back in June to do that presentation on the USDO, and we made the request for his PowerPoint. It took a while for us to get it because we had to do several requests. Michelle followed up a couple of times. I followed up on Michelle's, et cetera. And then I, you know, asked Dave for some help and so we did raise that and we still asked Tuesday. We hadn't gotten it. We have gotten, yes.
But we have it now?
Yes, it was sent out.
Your email, you click on that link and follow that stuff.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
So I want to raise it again with the mayor's, yesterday she made very clear to Dave and Brian that there's no excuse for them, any department not to provide...
He said he went away, but when I initially sent it...
Well, yeah, he was away because when I called him last week, he was away. I left a message.
But when I initially sent him that email, he was not away.
But initially, prior to that, he was not.
He was not.
Okay, so...
But he hasn't, you know, it just generally has not been...
That, well, I'm glad you said that. That's true.
True. I would say in the last six months.
No, it's just not this.
It's been really hard.
I don't know what's going on.
Scheduling meetings, everything is just like...
Well, I didn't see if they got a lot of the plate, but that's not really an excuse. So anyway, she made clear they will make it, they will make it clear to department, all department heads.
PowerPoint presentation you already have, it's a click of a button.
That if they're coming to caucus with presentations, they need to bring copies or, or a, you know...
Let me know in advance.
Stick with it for you or advance so that we can get that automatically and there's no reason why we shouldn't be getting those.
Chasing.
Et cetera, or have, or have to chase it down, which is what we were doing. I mean, it was coming to a point where we were even talking, thinking about holding it in contempt. That is...
Do we give a council jail?
Okay, the other thing, everyone knows that Jared's leaving.
It's last caucus.
Yeah.
Bon voyage, you see you in Miami.
Shall we give him a raise? Should we offer him a raise?
I don't know if that, I don't know if that was it.
Counsel officer will assign you to this.
That would be great.
But then it'll be contaminated.
So Monday night's meeting will be his last meeting. And, you know, we're going to repost the position, the, the posting we have for this to try to get some applicants in. Bill Kelly did give me some applications that he had, candidates that he interviewed and that he made some recommendations, so there are some of those. So at some point, not right now, but we'll be putting together again a sort of interview committee to do the interviews, but we'll get the posting done and some applications in so people can think about that. What am I thinking right now? Oh, yeah, Phil, in, in the interim, you know, I think Sarah, Sarah is Valance?
Sarah Valas.
Valance. So Sarah, you know, he, Phil said he will make, you know, if any research or whatever we need done, he'll work with us to, you know, have, you know, Sarah do that, some of that stuff. Marissa is coming back at some point soon.
First week in September.
First week in September. So whether she comes back to this role or something else, I'm not sure, but, you know, that's also happening. But in the interim, Bill is, considering that he's taking Jared away from us, has offered to be helpful as far as meeting whatever needs that we have.
I would think that now's a good time to, I mean, this was a big change when we made this position full-time.
Yep.
Maybe at some point we should have a conversation, Jared, about...
Yes, I think we're going to try to have that conversation.
About that, you know, whether his services were really utilized fully and what that certain...
Were his services fully utilized?
Sure. Of course they were. I'm just always worried about being full-time, you know, we continue, will continue to lose people to corporation counsel because it's full-time. And they see it's a higher paying down there than it is here. So, you know, somebody comes here, they like the atmosphere, and there's an opening in corporation counsel, they jump on it, because it's more money, it's more pay, and it's full-time.
Yeah, you know, I think, frankly, I don't know what the salary differential is, but I think also Jared, it's, the job, it's a different job.
It is a different job, thank you.
And it's really, you know, it's moving up.
It's really more interactive, yes. So you would definitely. With me personally, it was, Bill came to me, to be honest, I didn't seek it out, came to my office one afternoon and said, what do you think about this? And I sat on it for probably two weeks, because I wasn't really sure. I honestly have really enjoyed working with you all, and I do find the work that we do here fascinating and important. And so I was kind of like, eh, and it ultimately came down to my skill set and being able to do a little bit more and learn something that I'm not getting right now.
Yep.
And just making me more well-rounded. So that was the real reason why I decided to, to go downstairs.
This position made corp counsel increase the entry level salary, because it wasn't
that, it was sixty-five. And when they saw Jared, when that posted, and they were like, oh, we gotta increase it because we gotta compete with the council, because they're gonna get all the application with that being.
But salaries won't only.
But the salary is the same.
Experiences and the experiences you can get between here and down there.
It's different, for sure.
I mean, I have to say, obviously, it would be possible to have Jared for longer, but I think that it's kind of all goodness, if we're bringing people, good people into the city, I think it's fantastic if the city can like, if we can.
Me too.
Keep having opportunities for growth within the city, I think that's really great, because if you have somebody that's smart and hardworking and good at their job, like, they're going to wanna do things, you know, so it's like.
Yeah. I moved up. I mean, I changed positions within the city, so it happens.
Yeah, so I have.
This is Bill's revenge, because we stole Michelle from.
Well, that's, that's.
That is true.
How long were you here for, Jared? Jared, how long were you here for? How long has it been?
Ten months, I think.
Yeah, I think October is your anniversary.
Yeah, October.
And the agenda seems light enough, so maybe we might step out after the meeting on Monday.
In a position, I really enjoy having someone with me, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Having someone else I can bounce off with and work with, and it helps in the same department.
I think it worked out well, I will tell you, when we had Barbara here as a part-timer, I didn't always know when, where, whatever. She really didn't cover meetings either, things like that, and so it.
It helps with the meetings for sure, especially the late nights and trying to figure out the scheduling, helps a lot.
So it's involved into a position?
It's good to have a more of a window.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so too.
So maybe we need to get an older person who's kind of on the other end, career end, if he doesn't.
Who's retired.
I would want to play with him, we could use body.
Yeah.
I, I mean, just keep your eyes out for somebody that's great.
Real men.
Any other?
Happy to talk with anybody.
Before you go, you have to come to the last mission.
Yeah, get it done.
Any other issues, or anything else? Anything else?
Oh.
If not, anything going all right with you, Danielle?
I have a long list of people I'd like to fire.
Oh.
All right.
It's your department, you should start the process. Document, document, document.